Well, we cleared out the room, I guess, didn't we, somewhat? Okay. We got rid of all the naysayers. No, I'm just kidding. All right. We reconvene, and will the next citizen please come forward? Ma'am, state your name and speak loudly into the microphone, please.
Thank you. Yes, I have that problem sometimes. My name is Carolyn Gallagher, and I live in Cedar Creek. And this 10-year extension just recently came to my attention. I'm concerned about the controversial nature of the mine largely because of its location in the DRGR, and we, the concerned residents, haven't been given time to really think this extension through. The city's water task force ended its year of study with 30-plus recommendations for the DRGR area. It is currently advertising for a contractor, or I should say, the city is currently advertising, for a contractor to accomplish the recommendations for surface water data collection and modeling of the DRGR. After the selected contractor does the work and has an understanding of the land, the city will know better how to deal with the mine and other areas of the DRGR. And this is a good reason for not committing and waiting, and it's a good start for the city to make plans for the DRGR. Residents are still concerned about flooding, aquifer recharge, protection of wellfields from contaminants, clean and plentiful drinking water, protected species, et cetera. Using a mine for aquifer recharge as a park, filter marsh, or using the mine for aquifer recharge as a park, filter marsh, et cetera, may be a better alternative than a 10-year contract for pebble mining, but we need the time to find out. We are concerned about heavy truck traffic putting wear and tear on the streets, use of water for dust reduction on streets, and perhaps wheel washing. Concerned about noise, air and ground pollution, et cetera, and we would suggest that the mine be held responsible for restoring the area to the city's specifications, a park, a filter marsh, and even a mitigation of water uses. So I ask you to not recommend, at least now, that the city sign and get stuck with a 10-year contract that stops any city planning for the mine area. If this isn't possible, I would stress that the mine be required to restore it as it was historically, or to the city's specifications at the end of any new contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? How many people, if you'll raise your hand, are going to speak yet? One, two, three, four, five? Okay. We've had a request to maybe try to keep it as brief as possible, so if you're going to repeat what's already been said, we're getting the message. But go ahead, and...
I'm here without notes, so hopefully I'll be quick. My name is Meg Jacobson. I live in Bonita Springs, and I've been a full-time resident for 11 years. I live close to where these trucks go, and my concerns are micro and macro. At a micro level, I live four doors, no offense to the man from Citrus Park who lives a quarter mile, I live four doors from Logan, and Logan isn't even in this plan. There's no plan here. I hate to, this is just an extension. There's no plan. There's no remediation of the property. A few plants, with all deference to Mr. Kirby, is not remediation. There's no plan for remediation. I think that you would be wrong to approve it at this point. I don't even object to it being extended if it had a real plan behind it, and you know what's going to happen at the end. I think out of a "we give, you give" point of view, there should be donation to the city of what will become a park, and it should be financed during the next 10 years, so they can't just go out of business conveniently the day before they close it down. And secondly, I think you need to provide for the future, which includes Logan. Those trucks going down Logan, four doors, literally, from where I live, are going to be a real mess, and they need to have not only specification that it can't go down Terry, but it shouldn't be able to go down Logan either. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Linda Schwartz, and I've been a full-time resident of Bonita Springs since 2001. I'm strongly opposed to extending the mine's contract, which expires in 2018, not 2020. They should start restoration work immediately on the sites that are no longer being mined, and should have the restoration fully completed by the expiration of the contract in 2018. As many other speakers have noted, mining is not compatible with the Bonita Springs comp plan. Mining poses danger to our water supply and may increase flooding. I know someone whose house foundation was cracked as a result of vibration from the mining operations. I'm also concerned about the dump truck traffic on Bonita Beach and other roads, and the hazard that these vehicles pose. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. If you'll please get in line behind this lady, if you're going to speak, and then we'll just take you in order.
Good morning.
That's perfect.
My name is Jane Trulove, and I'm a citizen of the city, but I'm a new one. Everybody else here has been here for a long time. I've been here for about three years. So I don't have...
Excuse me. Were you sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I don't have all the history and the understanding of the complexities of this mining operation, but after today, I think maybe ignorance is bliss on my part, although I did try to go through the 850 pages on the city council website. I have a couple of quick questions and reactions. First is, I was shocked to find out that we had a mine in the middle of our Water Resource Protection Area. This didn't make any sense. But then I read and realized that it pre-existed the establishment of the DRGR. But I look at what the long-term goals are over the next 14 years, and Bonita's going to be changing a great deal, and there's going to be tremendous growth. And it seems to me to lock yourselves in until 2030 is really going to limit your options going forward. Also, when the city states its objective is, policy, I think, 1.41, existing inconsistent usage shall be allowed to continue until voluntarily removed, but shall not be increased in size or intensity. And then later on, in another piece, it said they shall be reduced by attrition. I don't understand, because no one defined what intensity or size is. Is it the number of trucks? Is it the number of tons? Is it the number of companies that are doing the extraction? Because my understanding is that there are a lot of outside companies that are actually using the mine. So how are we measuring whether there's going to be a change in intensity or size? Also, I'd like to know who those companies are, and what are the plans for them over the next few years in terms of their expected use of the mine? Who measures how much they're taking? Where are these materials going? Who's checking these numbers for the city and the county? Also, if the permit's extended into 2030, will the owner, if it doesn't prove to be profitable over the next few years, be able to sell this to another mining company? And will the permit, will basically be transferred to the new mine owner? These are just questions that I would ask, because it wasn't clear from the 850 pages what the answers were to those. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Those are all good questions. Good morning, sir.
Good morning to you, sir.
And speak into the, don't put the microphone down there.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work. It's a difficult task, and we appreciate it. My name is Dan Wagner. I'm a 21-year full-time resident of Bonita Springs. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live in Worthington Country Club. Worthington and Hunters Ridge and Quail West, you probably all know, were the first of a stream of good-quality communities that were developed on the east side of 75 on Bonita Beach Road. Were all affected by the mine. Seems to get worse from time to time. For many years, we have observed the game of, quote, "10 more years," played by the quarries, many owners, and by the Bonita Springs governing bodies. Sometimes they also play promise. Promise is telling Bonita Springs residents that they're going to get another 10 years, and they promise to clean it up and beautify the quarry area for the use of the public. No one's ever won that game, let alone the residents. We, the residents, are tired of this game. We plan to convince the city council that the games are over, and the citizens are going to win the last game. We thank you for your time, and by the way, the zoning committee could help us immensely by your making the same recommendation that we want to convince the council to come up with. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll be very, I'll be very brief. My name's Tom Gibbons.
Hold the microphone up, Tom.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. I'm just going to be very brief. I agree with the gentleman who was up here before, and I hope that you guys do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. David, you've been standing.
Good morning, everybody. I'm David Luciano from John R. Wood Properties.
David, spell your last name for, you got it?
L-U-C-I-A-N-O. John R. Wood Properties in Bonita Springs. I've been a Realtor for over 25 years. I've been marketing property in East Bonita for the past 10 years for many of those property owners out there. And this mine is going to continue to instill indecision on any course that the area will take in the next 25 years, if this passes. The area is going to remain in its current state, and it's going to delay any decisions with DRGR or with any kind of development. And you guys are looking at another 25 years from this point on of that area staying just the way it is. It's not going to get any nicer. In the meantime, property values will stay stagnant also, or could possibly even diminish a little bit just because of the use in its current state. Meanwhile, you're watching what's happening on Bonita Beach Road in the eastern section with Bonita National and all the developments that are planning to go into construction out in that area. And if you take a ride down Bonita Beach Road, it looks really nice. It's a pleasant drive down to those communities. Take a ride down Bonita Grand, either east or west, and it's unsightly. It's littered with debris from the trucks. People don't want to use it, and it's dangerous. I suggest that you deny this application, and at least give the citizens of Bonita Springs a chance to voice their concerns in the future on this project. And that's it for me. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, David. Yes. What, saw somebody else? Martha, wait a minute.
I just need to clarify the record as to who I represent, if that's okay?
We have, okay, we...
You got one more.
Okay.
Is that all right?
We were going to do it during housekeeping after the public testimony was closed, but if you want, you could, you could say it right now and just get it...
Okay. Scott Duval with Brendan Mann and Diamond. And for the record, I indicated I represented a few property owners, but I wanted to clarify who that was. George and Joanne Gatterer own a 20-acre parcel right here at the, just immediately south of the mine, and on the east side of Bonita Grand. And the Thurston family, through some holding companies, owns 45 acres approximately right there, again, immediately south of the mine and just east of the Gatterer's property. So those are the two clients I represent. I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Martha, will you step to the podium, please?
For the record, Martha Simons, S-I-M-O-N-S. Thank you, gentlemen, for hearing all of the testimony here today. I'm glad I don't have a limit, but too bad for you. Anyhow, we'll keep it, we'll keep it tight. From our city zoning ordinance, yeah, I hear you, bud. From our city zoning ordinance, actually creating our city zoning. What are we supposed to be doing with zoning? To encourage and promote, in accordance with present and future needs, the safety, health, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the citizens of Bonita Springs to recognize and promote real property rights, and to provide for efficiency and economy in the process of development, for the appropriate and best use of land, for preservation, protection, development, and conservation of the historical and natural resources of land, water, and air. And on that basis, that's what you'll be making a recommendation to the city council. Okay, here's what I've heard. We have noise. We have vibration. We have blasting. We have trucks. We have traffic, but also we have deteriorating road conditions. We, what about fees for road maintenance? I haven't heard that come up. You know, when you do development, you get impact fees. If you continue a permit for mining, do you get road maintenance fees? Because Bonita Grand's gotten pretty dicey sometimes, and it's a county road, and you know how they are about giving us money. Okay. Blasting vibrations to foundations. We've heard about water quality and flow, perms and swells built and affect the entire DRGR. Safety issues with the trucks, with speeding. We, a person was killed on Bonita Grand by a truck several years ago, a cyclist down at Bonita Grand and Bonita Beach Road. We haven't, I think Mr. Strater mentioned about other agencies such as, I haven't heard this, I know that there's an environmental review waiver being asked for, but what about the DEP Office of Mining? Have we heard what their issues are with this? Okay. Next, there was mention of the comp plan. As a former city council member, I can tell you, we studied and studied and studied this area, and we've determined over and over and over again that we did not want to change the use. I guess we'll do it again, you know? We'll keep going on, because it's sort of a Gordonian knot that we don't unwind. The current uses do include recreational and public uses. What did I find out in some of my research? I looked at Dun &amp; Bradstreet. Bonita Grand aggregates is one of the most productive and profitable sand and gravel mines in Florida, making $4.7 million annually for sand and gravel. And if this is true, I mean, it's Dun &amp; Bradstreet, $820,000 from lumber and building materials. I assume that's maybe asphalt, you know, you just put it under that category. I would like to see the asphalt plant gone. I don't think that's a good thing to have in our water resource. Okay. The development economy has recovered more quickly in Bonita than most any place else in the state. So that loss during the economic downturn, which, you know, the governor allowed and renewed permits, has actually turned and shortened in the Bonita Springs area. That downturn has turned around. So when maybe mines elsewhere aren't as profitable, this one has become so, and they stated that in their testimony. So today, we see a profitable mine, but it is a scenario of diminishing returns. We heard from Mr. DePue and Mr. Morris about the amount of extractable material. They've probably extracted about $50 million since the original permitting of this mine, cubic feet of material, and so they have $16 million left. You're talking, you heard other people talk about, well, let's have a sinking fund. $4.7 million, 10 years, that's $47 million. How much of that do you want to make a sinking fund? I mean, you get down to real nuts and bolts. So in 10 years, how much can be raised for a sinking fund to actually really reclaim that property? They already received a permit extension, so maybe just two to four years is necessary to be able to do the reclamation work. I'm not sure. I don't know. That's what local government's supposed to figure out, as we have a staff for. I would actually like to see that mine reclaimed to be something like Lakes Park, which was a burrow pit. And you've seen how Lakes Park actually has become a very valuable asset in southwest Florida. It's not just a park with little ducks and little rides. It's a filter marsh, which, okay, the elevation, can it become a filter marsh for this property? Not sure, but it is an asset. It can be something useful to the public and the citizens of the Bonita Springs. Can it become a mitigation bank, where the reclamation can be paid for by mitigation of development elsewhere? Because you know the county's going on and on. So how can we draw some of that money and maybe make it helpful for Mr., for the Bank of the Netherlands, I think it is? Okay. I've lived in Florida since 1978, and back, I used to live in Tampa, where I moved here in the early 80s. I had the occasion to fly, you know, in a small private plane up and down the west coast back then. I saw what the landscape looked like. Back in 2002, when I was on the city council, I went up to Tallahassee to lobby for fertilizer, which affects the DRGR. I think it was in 2012. And I saw what has become of the Florida landscape because of mining. The mining reclamation rules by the Department of Environmental Protection are not very strong, and I have read the mining reclamation agreement that we have. What? It's like bushes and trees around the lakes. That's not reclamation. Please, I beg you, to go out to that site. If you continue this meeting, that's, might be what we have to do, is continue it. There's a lot of information here, and this is a large parcel. 1,300 acres, is it? Something like that, Mr. DePue, 1,300? This is a major decision for our city. Anyhow, the west coast of Florida's become a moonscape. It's not been reclaimed. So my concern is, we have diminishing returns, eventually in the future, if you grant this even. We have a moonscape. We don't have a good reclamation plan. So for the immediate, I'd like to see some conditions set up. If you do agree to extend their permit, and I'd say two to four years, set up an Exco account for that reclamation and road maintenance, because the road's already been deteriorated. Remove any 951 easement, because that's just going to be a bundle of worms there. I saw that the city of Bonita Springs was going to do water quality monitoring. I don't know if we're paying for that or they're paying for it, but make sure they pay for it. I think they pay for it. The strong reclamation plan. In the long term, this is, this is, as I said before, I believe it's, the owner is the bank of the Netherlands who's financed the $67 million. Oh, my God, the poor guys, you know? Except we saw a lot of large banks fall. Yay for the Dutch, strong countries, strong banking institutions. Being of strong Dutch heritage myself, my grandmother immigrated here from Holland, I'm extremely proud of the great engineering feats that the Dutch have achieved, particularly with the Zijdersdyk working. If you know anything about them conquering the North Sea. This bank...
Stay on the subject.
No, this is, this is germane. This bank has access to some of the greatest engineers in the world. Okay? They can help figure out our problem, and what the potential use of that mine could be. Jim Beaver, we heard from, from the Citizen Water Strategy Task Force, says it could be a reservoir, it could be a filter marsh. It could be helpful, it could slow down the water. You know, we have a flooding problem out in East Bonita. We could slow down that water. So I'm not going to read to you all the great benefits of the Zijdersdyk.
Thank you.
Yes. But it is an amazing feat. And I believe that Lakes Park could be an excellent model for us. A mitigation bank could be an excellent model for us. It could be a win-win. And, you know, Congress is very divided in this country, but I believe that local government can actually bring people together, and you can be part of that. And we can actually get something that works for the public, for the landholders, their property rights, that's what you have to consider. But I don't know that, you know, a 10-year extension is going to be that. I would ask that you just kind of maybe table this. I don't know if you can do that. Continue it to the next meeting, and see if there can be some conversation between now and then. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the hard job you have to do. It's not easy with a big question like this. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Nice to know about your Danish heritage, too.
Dutch, darling, Dutch. Dutch. Nederlander.
I guess I wasn't paying attention.
Also Irish, so watch it.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none. Audrey, you said you have a little housekeeping you want to take care of before we ask for rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. I want to do a few things. One was the Scott Duval, which he handled. The second thing is, we did hear that Mr. Insirpi did do an inspection trip of the mine. I would like all of you to disclose on the record at this time, any other, anybody else who has had an inspection trip, or if you had contact, not just with the applicant, but if you talked to anybody, because you have an ex parte obligation for the record, to make sure that the record shows who you communicated to prior to you making any decision in this case, so that the public, as well as Mr. Schrop, as well as staff, have a meaningful opportunity to question who you spoke with. Any members of the public, council, the applicant, if you would disclose those on the record at this time, or file the appropriate paper before the hearing is done, but now that time has probably lapsed. I know that Mr. Wersters was read into the record. Mr. Insirpi?
What's next?
As far as, you did an inspection trip of the mine?
Oh, no. He asked me if I was out there at one time or another, and I was out there about six, seven years ago.
Okay, so not recently. And have you had any contact with any people regarding this case? Mr. Kissinger?
I've had no contact or conflict or inspection.
Excellent. Mr. Pistori?
None.
Same. Mr. Brunswick?
I have, a couple of people have approached me and talked to me about it, you know, just their thoughts, but I, it hasn't swayed me.
So those would be residents of Bonita?
Citizens of Bonita.
Okay. Mr., and Mr. Schrop, are you satisfied with that answer, or do you wish to have disclosure of names? Okay. Mr. Donnelly?
None of the above.
Okay. Mr. Lyles?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you for that housekeeping. The next thing is, I think there is some, there's confusion on a couple of little matters. I just want to make sure you're clear. The city entered into an annexation agreement. The city also entered, or the city also prepared a vested rights determination. The vested rights determination is a snapshot of whatever they were vested on the date of the vesting rights determination. It is not something that projects a future, what in the future that they're entitled to, nor, or what, you know, the council will make changes, or does it do anything else? So it's just a snapshot as to what is a vested rights determination. I can answer that more if you wish. And that's something that we have in our comprehensive plan, you know, so that everybody is assured what they are allowed at the time they are making the request. Agreements, annexation agreements, or any of development agreements, which are statutory, actually. There are case law out there that makes it very clear that the agreements will show the intent of the parties at the time of making that agreement, but at no time can the government delegate its police power, which is its zoning authority. So...
Its what power?
Police power, but police power in the sense of zoning, not the sense of actual police. So in other words, there's a case called Ponce Inlet, or City of Ponce Inlet versus Pecheta, and it's actually several cases, you know, where it was, you know, there was definitely the intent of the parties to do one thing. There was a change in the electorate to do another. Ponce Inlet was sued. Several different cases actually were derived, with the end result at this point being that anything that was an agreement and trying to assert would be an unlawful delegation of police power. So I just want you to understand where the agreements as to what you're doing today. You know, today you are, today, or whether you continue the case whenever, you are making a recommendation to city council on what they should do based on their police power. Two more, I just want to go into a couple statutes here. The first is one that we had some discussions on, and that's Florida statute, section 252.363. Peter O'Flynn made the comment, how can the governor sign something that can affect zoning? The governor and the legislature does it all the time. If they feel the government, they do, I mean, and you can hear from the peanut gallery behind me, it's relatively, happens on more occurrences than one. In this case, they did adopt so that whenever, you know, a land use lawyer could peruse the executive orders, find a declaration of emergency. Now, sometimes the declarations of emergencies are very county-specific, so if it doesn't include all counties or does not state league county, it doesn't apply here, and we would not apply an extension. But otherwise, you get the time for the emergency plus six months additional to any development permit. Now, there is an attorney general, this statute was adopted in, I believe, 2011 or 2012. It's a new statute. Of course, it predates the mine, or it doesn't predate the mine. It, you know, came about after the mine already was about, but it is something that's out there, and staff does not have the ability not to process that. And the attorney general has made that clear in a 2012 attorney general opinion. And that's, it's incumbent on the applicant to make the request. We do not process those unless the applicants make such requests. And so we actually have an administrative code setting forth how to make that request so that everything follows the P and Q. So, you know, some property owners take advantage of it, some do not. You know, it's up to the property owners, it's not ours. Which brings me to my last point. The Florida legislature this year adopted a new statute. It's 70.45. And that statute prohibits... And that statute prohibits exactions, and I want to read you what a definition of exaction is. So that's prohibiting a condition, if that condition either lacks essential nexus to a public purpose, a legitimate public purpose, and, and this is the killer, so it has to meet two tests there, is not roughly proportionate to the impact the government seeks to avoid, minimize, or mitigate. So we've heard people talking today about wanting to place a park on this land. And certainly, a park is a public purpose. Everybody would agree to that, whether it's legitimate or not, on a property owner without compensation is another thing. But the question is, is that proportionate to the impact that we seek to avoid? So if you feel that the park is roughly proportionate to the impact, you would need to state those type of findings. Likewise, if it is not, it's not something that could be conditioned in this extension request. With that being said, I think that's pretty much from housekeeping, from, I would suggest at this time, we have, do you want Mr. Schrop to go first?
Well, I have, I have a couple of questions on your, on your housekeeping.
Uh huh.
The two-year extension of the governor's office granted?
It's not a two-year. There were separate extensions.
Okay. Two, two one-year extension?
No, it actually is a, they do an SB 360.
Well, that, I don't think that matters.
It equaled about two years, roughly.
Is that something that this board or our council has the, can we overturn that?
No, sir.
Cannot overturn a governor's. Okay. The other question that's come up by a few people is, what is the process if we determine that we can't come to an agreement today? What is the process for continuation of this hearing?
Well, again, whether you decide to continue it, or whether because you're six people, you tie the vote, and you don't have a motion, you could then entertain another motion to continue, or alternatively, it would go to city council at their next zoning hearing on this.
Without, without any determination from this board?
Correct. It would just, I would reflect in the zoning, the zoning document that it was a 3-3, you know, vote, if that, you know, came to fruition.
All right. And Mr. O'Flynn had his hand up, but before we go to him, does anybody else on the board have any comments or questions? Okay, on the, yeah, Richard.
Audrey, one of the arguments was that there was like a sacrosanct agreement amongst the parties that this thing would be terminated in, was it 2018? And it was represented that, you know, that sort of, that was the deal.
It was, and unless there was an earlier termination. And at the time, we contemplated there would be an earlier termination as a result of the city amending the future land use map, the comprehensive plan, to entertain some form of plan development.
But that, of course, that never happened.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
But the fruition was December 2018, or whatever date, 2018, was the end date, but it could terminate earlier. There was also, and I just, I know Jackie's stomping at the bit, but there was also in that agreement, the whole course of action, that there was a five-year plan, that once they received their entitlements, they would, they would have to close out the mine. I believe it was fi, I don't have it in front of me. I believe it was five years, could be seven. But it was, once they had everything in place for their PD, there was a time zone.
For the record, Jack Longgensen, the December 31st, 2018 date that's referenced in both the annexation agreement and the vested rights agreement comes from the 2002 zoning resolution for the IPD zoning. And in that zoning resolution, it says that the only way that it can be extended is by an amendment to the plan development, and that is why the applicant is here today. So that's where that date comes from.
Thank you for the clarification. I see Peter O'Flynn's hand in the air. Do you want to step forward? Is that okay?
Well, act, well...
I just want to respond, because my name was mentioned. First of all, I absolutely love Audrey's impression of me. The, but just to be clear, if I wasn't before, I am not questioning the issue of the permit. The governor has the right to extend the permit. What I believe I said clearly before is, there's at least a question, I'm not saying it's clear, as to whether or not that action can functionally amend an agreement between two parties. That's it. Thank you.
And let me just point out one additional thing, which is, if a party is aggrieved by the end decision, they have a right to challenge the decision of city council, not you guys, because it has to go to city council first, but it would be based on this record here today, as to inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. I mean, there's other forms, declaratory actions, there's other things they could do, but, I mean, a citizen, if they think that we're unlawfully applying extensions based on the comprehensive plan, does have that authority to take that through a writ of certiorari.
Okay, good. Then at this time, I would ask for Mr. Schrop, if he has any rebuttal that he wishes to make to the questions that have been, Mr. Schrop or Mr. Depew, either one of you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief in deference to your time, and I appreciate your attention during the long hearing today, this morning. And I will be very brief. We're now at a point where there's approximately four and a half years before the current termination date of 2020 recognized for the mining operation. At the present mining rates and what's anticipated, that simply is not enough time to complete the mining operation within the realm of what was anticipated when the agreements were entered into, when the, when the zoning was approved, and what's occurred. Production rates reduced significantly during the recession, and have delayed completion of the mining plan from that which was originally contemplated. So the extension is requested to allow for a fulfillment of the mine plan as permitted due to circumstances that simply were beyond the control of the current mine operator or its predecessors. I appreciate Jackie's clarification on the record, because I think she expressed it properly. We're here, and we submitted this request through the established zoning procedure that's available to us under the zoning requirements of the city, and also the previous approvals that were granted by the county. And we're simply requesting that it be reviewed in that, in that manner, as a simple zoning request for an extension of the termination date of the resolution. That was what was contemplated as the avenue to pursue, and that's what we're pursuing. The recognition of vested rights that has occurred in the past, both in the agreement and in the vested rights determination, is, is significant in our mind, and it's based on a recognition that the use can continue, and it's a recognition that the owners, over history, have relied upon through the years. The fact that the agreements and the vested rights determinations reflect that we acknowledged that the termination date established under the resolution was 2018 and has been extended to 2020 is not the equivalent of saying, we won't request an extension at the appropriate time, and that there aren't going to be reasons for granting that extension, either in law or at equity, as, as the case comes before you. So with that regard, we simply believe that the vested rights determination is, is, as Audrey said, a snapshot at that time, that the owner has received the right to mine in accordance with the plan that had been established, and we are following established procedures, trying to extend the termination date that was recognized at the zoning at that time. That's about the extent that I'd like to get to do my rebuttal.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity, and if there's any other questions that we can answer, we're happy to try and do that. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask the board if they have any questions, Mr. Schrop.
No question.
Discussion by the board. Jackie?
For the record, Jack Longgensen, I just want to touch on some comments myself that were brought up in the hearings. One was in regards to public notice, and staff did follow the proper public notice procedures. This case was advertised in the news press on October 1st, in a general circulation of where they do advertisements for public hearings. And even at that time, the public was put on notice that they could come to the city clerk's office, or they could come to community development to review the file. Yes, we do apologize that the file was so large, and typically, we don't provide all that amount of detailed backup, but because of the subject of the case, staff wanted to make sure everything was put into the record, and that is why the document is so large, and it's over 850 pages. But the packets were available with the city clerk a week ahead of time. We just had trouble uploading it to the website due to its file size. But we advertised in the news press on the first, the property was posted 15 days ahead of time, courtesy notices were mailed at least 25 days in advance. So proper notice was given about this hearing, but we do apologize that the entire packet online was not available sooner.
That's understandable. Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, we have a decision to make. We've heard that...
Can I have a question?
Yes, sure.
I'd like to hear from one of the environmental experts who were previously sworn in. My question relates to, I've heard testimony that we're mining lime rock. I've also heard a comment that lime rock is very porous. I've heard a comment that the holes that we've dug in the earth out there are 90 feet deep. I, I don't understand the environmental risks, if any, that we're dealing with here, and maybe one of the experts that you presented could, could help us understand that.
Yeah, why don't we call up our consulting hydrologist, David Brown, with Progressive Water Resources, and you can ask your questions. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please pull the microphone up, you're a tall guy.
For the record, I'm David Brown. I'm a principal with Progressive Water Resources and a certified professional geologist in the state of Florida. There was a comment made earlier that this area is a karstic area. It is not considered a karstic area. Karstic areas are areas prone to a lot of solution activity, dissolution of the limestone. If you've ever been to North Florida and seen the cavities and sinkholes, or along the Lake Wales Ridge, those are karstic areas. So this particular area is not characterized by the development of karst geology, which is large solution features, sinkholes, and passageways. The limestone that they're currently mining is the Tamiami Formation. It's a fairly dense limestone, as seen by the difficulties in excavating the material. It's very, very hard, okay? So that material then is extracted via dragline, brought up to the surface, and then it is crushed and sized to various different types of material that's used for different types of construction. Regarding water quality, the pits are monitored, as well as monitor wells, with extensive water quality monitoring. Most of these samples are taken and analyzed down to parts per billion, looking at various hydrocarbons and any chemicals that are used on site. There is no known spills on site, no reported spills, and there's been no statistically significant evidence of any hydrocarbon increases. So the water quality is looked at very, very carefully. It's reported not only to, to the city, but also to Lee County, as well as to the Department of Environmental Protection.
Does that answer your question? Anything else? Thank you.
Okay.
So, gentlemen, we've all heard the testimony from the applicant. We've heard staff's recommendations. Our public has, many of them have come out today as citizens to speak on this topic, on this issue. It's, we have, we have a duty to act in the best interest of all the parties. Before I ask for a motion, I just wish to comment and ask the question, is this extension, is it going to be in the best interest for the city of Benita Springs and its citizens? How will it affect us going forward into the future? Are we delaying what may be an inevitable? I guess that's, perhaps could be taken as an opinion. So we've heard that there could be many uses for this land, which could be beneficial, more, more beneficial. The, the applicant has the use of the land through 2018 or through 2020 with the extensions? So, that's how I feel, that, or I asked some questions. Could it be, continue to be more beneficial to the city the way it is now, by granting an extension to 2030? Some of us won't be here then, but we have...
Speak for yourself, Roger.
Huh?
Speak for yourself.
On the zoning board, on the zoning board.
You won't be on the board if you are. But, so we've got a, we have an important decision to make. Do I have any motion?
I'd just like to make a statement. We've heard a lot of concerns from the people, you know. My feeling is if the mine corporation has till 2020, all right? Do a little bit further homework. You got till 2020 to come back in front of this board. You know, it's not something that has to be done right away, you know? And I think the citizens' concern should be addressed, as well as the city's concern should be addressed. And I think if you got that much time, at least '28 to '18, you know, you've got that amount of time to sit back down and come up with an alternative plan or whatever, you know? So my feeling is, I think, if you got that much time, continue until then.
Yep.
I'd make a motion if I can.
Well, you certainly may.
Okay, I want to make a motion to deny what's before us, because I think it affects our comp...
That's on, you need to...
Can you hear me? I said I was going to vote no because of my concern on the comp plan, the permitting, and there is no plan for development after termination of the mining. So I, that's my feeling.
Well, you said you, you said you were going to vote no. What did, you need to make a motion.
I did. I made a motion to deny.
To deny, okay, okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Maybe it would be appropriate at this time to ask the applicant if they wanted to withdraw their request.
Thank you for the opportunity, but no, we would not like to withdraw at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second to the motion to deny the extension, request for extension. And if you would, Charlie, we'll call for a vote.
Mr. Insirpi?
No.
Wait, a no vote would be to not deny.
Deny.
Okay, if you want to deny, the vote would be yes.
Yes. So Mr. Insirpi...
What now?
No.
The motion to deny.
The motion is to deny, so if you're in favor of the motion, you would vote yes. If you're not in favor of the motion, you would vote no. Understand?
That means you don't want to have it.
You want to deny, the motion for extension would be a yes vote.
If you want to mine more, vote no.
Maybe, maybe we should...
Want another 10 years, you would vote no.
Okay.
She's turning on...
Maybe start the vote again.
Mr. Insirpi?
Yes.
Mr. Brunswick?
Yes.
Mr. Pastore?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Lyles?
Yes.
Mr. Kissinger?
Yes.
That's a unanimous vote.
The motion carries. The decision is at this time to deny the request for the extension beyond the year 2020.
Thank you for your time this morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
I'd say we'd give it till, I think, 2018.
Yeah, it's gonna happen.
Yeah? Yeah.
I mean, they're already in talks with the county, so it'll be...
I thought that's as far as I could go, is 2018.
All of you.
I did. It was Pacheta, right.